I am Jamaica. Thank you guys so much for being here today with us. I'm sorry, we are running a little bit behind schedule, but it's okay. We're here now. So I am so honored to be here. Mike is probably, I'm gonna say, one of my best friends. So I'm glad that I can be here helping him out, emceeing the show. I am a little bit about myself. I'm Jamaica, like the country. And I'm going to be introducing some lovely young ladies that are going to be talking about their experience. We've got a former student and a CPS parent, so I know they know the issues and I know that what they say is going to really ring true. So if I am going to kick it to Jackie with a CPS parent and listen to what she has to say. Thank you guys so much.
Hi, my name is Jackie Presley. I am a CPS parent of seven. I met Mike when we were, when COVID first began. I got met him before then, but I officially met him when COVID first began. And we worked together with a company named Cohere and we were talking about like, what things we can do to make the schools better when they, when the kids return to the school. The one thing that I appreciate most about Mike is his consistency. It was like every time that we had an idea, whatever, like he never backpedaled. He never went back on. What he, like he might have thought about it more, but he never backpedaled. He stood firm on his word. And that's something that's very important to me as a CPS parent, as we seen the pandemic play out over the last year. We know that people tend to waffle this way or that way. But I loved Mike's consistency and I loved his availability and he actually listened. Like when parents were telling, telling him what we wanted and things that we can use to make it better. He actually listened and he brought it back to the board. So for me, that's very important. Um, like I said, I am a mom of seven, so I have three high schoolers. And then I have four children at elementary school. So for me, it's like, at the end of the day, it's just like, Mike is the best person because he listens and not everybody's listening. Everybody has their own agenda, but with Mike, it was more like he always was available. And that availability is very important for me and my family. And I love the fact that he really listened. Like my son wrote him an email before and he was like, hey, he responded back. And like for a 10th grader, that means a lot to have a school board member that actually responds back and pays attention to what's going on. And that's pretty much all I can say right now.
Thank you so much for that, Jackie. And I mean, to piggyback on that, uh, everything that Jackie said is completely true. Like I myself am a CPS parent. I am also a graduate of SCPA, so woo, go Raiders! Um, so, but I also have two, I have two seven-year-olds, twins in first grade at SCPA. And I, every time that I hear Mike speak about any of the issues, I'm always in line with him. So I really know that he really appreciates, he really wants to take care of our kids. And that's really what I, I want, you know? I want someone that's gonna look out for my kids as much as I'm gonna look out for my kids. And so that is Mike. Things that I heard from Jackie is that he's consistent, he's firm, like he's true to his word. And that is really what I appreciate. Um, and he really listens. And then he tells me things that like I didn't, wouldn't even have thought of. Like I got a text message saying that, oh, we're not gonna have to pay our fees. And I'm just like, oh, that is something that I didn't even know that I was gonna worry about. But I'm glad that I don't have to worry about it. So from here, I, I think we're going to kick it to Karen. And, um, who is a former student of Mike's. So take it away, Karen. Oh, no, not yet. Nope. Backstage is telling me, no, not yet. So here I am. Welcome back. Uh, we are gonna get along and get, keep moving. And I am going to introduce a former student, Ms. Karen, who was having some technical difficulties. But I think that we are good to go now. So on to you, Ken, or, or not. Or let me, let's talk about me. Let's talk about how I met Mike. I met Mike actually at a Queens Village meeting. And it was kind of odd because it's all about black women and here's this white dude, but it was okay. He actually fit in. He actually fit in, which I very much appreciated. And, uh, kind of like what Jackie was saying is that he was there to listen and I love that about him. So I, I'm here for it. So count me in. I like Mike. My vote is for Mike. Uh, and I think that we are going to, oh, no, it's the policy committee. I think it was the policy committee. But no, I met him before then. But I think that we know each other from the Cradles Policy Committee. And I love the work that we do there. Again, he just listens. And I'm going to tell you the truth, I don't get that from men a whole bunch these days. So I very much appreciate that for myself. And of course, being a CPS parent, being a CPS alum, um, I actually sit on the alumni board for, um, SCPA. So I'm glad that I'm, I'm still very much a part of it. I'm still much, it's very much a part of the CPS community. And I love anyone that is trying to do better for our kids, um, which is gonna do better for our community, right? Our kids are the bedrock of our community. Um, and if anyone is wanting to donate, like give some coin to our organization. So you can find all of the links that you need at Mike Morowski.com/donate. If you wanna volunteer, which we, I mean, we're gonna get t-shirts, you guys. Who wants a t-shirt? So, and that's gonna be at Mike Morowski slash get involved dot com, Mike Morowski dot com slash get involved. And, um, who doesn't want a t-shirt? And it's a pretty cool logo, like who doesn't look good in orange and blue? Like count me in, I'm here for it. So I'm thinking that we're gonna get this rared up. Um, I know we were having some technical difficulties with Ms. Karen, but I think we're got, I think we got there. Or maybe we haven't. So I'm gonna keep talking because I can do that. Uh, I kind of wonder what my children are gonna, what my, hopefully my kids can watch this later. But, um, again, back to how awesome Mike is, I guess we can keep talking about that. Cause he actually called me maybe 40 minutes ago and asked me, hey, can you do me a favor? But it's okay, you can say no. But who says no to Mike? And I'm just like, what do you need? Here I am. I am here for it. Because he has shown me that he's been there for me just like this. So I was like, count me in, coach. Here I am. And that is his attitude when it comes to CPS, it comes to our kids, our schools, learning environments in general, like he is the one to go to. I would probably call him also. Um, gonna tell you the truth, I had no idea who exactly it was. Cause I, I saved his name as Dr. Mike Biggie, which I'm not exactly sure why I saved his name as that. But I, I had to, I had to check myself for a minute of like, who is this? Like, thank God that I did answer and it was for a good cause. Like I am definitely here for it. However, I can help, I want you guys to come through and help as much as you all can. I think that Karen is finally getting here. But again, don't have me talking forever, cause I can't. Okay, I think we got Karen here. Karen, can you hear us? Maybe, cause we can see. Now we're back on me. Now I can see myself. Um, I'm sure that she will get here. And she will have all the great, great things to say about Mr. or Dr. Mike. Actually, can we put that on a t-shirt somewhere? Dr. Mike Biggie? I would appreciate, appreciate that. That would be great. So, um, from here, I think that we are going to, okay, they're not ready. I'm just gonna keep talking. Uh, again, I have, um, seven-year-olds that are in CPS, that have been in CPS. And actually, I had a little bit of a conundrum. My, my seven-year-old went from one CPS school, Dater Montessori, to SCPA. And this was the end of last year. So we all experienced the, well, the end of last school year. So we all experienced that, of course. So we all know the pandemonium that was going on with this pandemic. So I had no idea what was going on and I didn't know where my kids were gonna go the next year. And, but Mike can tell you better. So Mike's going to, um, I'm going to introduce, hey, Mike is gonna come on and he's gonna tell you how great he is. So take it away, Mike. Whenever they are ready. Nice to see you.
Hey, good to see you too. Can you hear me?
I can.
Oh, I finally got pulled out of backstage. I felt like I was, uh, felt like I was sort of like trapped back there. Um, wow, Jamaica, thank you so much, um, you know, uh, for all of you watching. I appreciate you being patient with our technical difficulties. Uh, many of you know my campaign manager, Jayla, who was my campaign manager last time. And she is a former student of mine turned very close friend. Um, now she's my boss. Um, Jayla, uh, had a very unexpected day. And so she is making all of this happen, um, from a place she never thought she would be. She hurt her toe pretty good. And so we send her love to Jayla. Um, and that's why I called Jamaica, Jamaica. Jayla, Jayla's in pain. She's gonna try to make this work, but we need somebody to come help. So Jamaica, thank you so much, um, for being here. You're a great friend. And Jackie, uh, I know you're on vacation, uh, so for you to come in from the beach, uh, to come and talk at this kickoff means absolutely the world to me. I can't, I can't say it enough. So thank you all. And Karen, hopefully you'll be able to get on. Uh, my former student Karen, uh, was going to introduce me. And hopefully, uh, Jayla and Karen will be able to work that out and she'll be able to come talk to you, um, at the end here. So, and if she can't, then next time. Uh, so Karen, I know you can hear me. So thank you so much, um, for trying your best to be here. So I'm not gonna take up too much of everybody's time, but I do need to say a few things to all of you. Um, it's been quite a year and, uh, you know, I'm really excited to get on the campaign trail and to get back, um, earning my seat back on the Cincinnati Public Schools Board of Education. Before I do anything, um, I need to send my heartfelt appreciation to our host committee. Uh, you've seen our host committee list is vast. It's long and it's, it's a strong list of CPS parents from all over the city. Um, spanning all schools, neighborhood schools, magnet schools, grade schools, high schools, preschools. Um, some of those parents are also teachers. And, uh, again, uh, not to belabor the point, but I cannot tell you all how much it means to me to have the support of parents and, and everybody, everybody's neighbors who are out there. And so thank you, um, to all of you for hosting this. I wish we could be in person this summer. I, I'm fingers crossed, uh, we will have some in-person events. We can all hang out. Maybe someday we can, uh, high five again and perhaps even hug one another. So thank you so much again for, for doing this. And thank you, uh, one last time to Jackie and to Karen and to Jamaica, um, for being here, uh, to support. So, you know, campaigns are interesting. I, um, I am far more fond of the work than I am of campaigning. Uh, campaigning is a, is, is necessary in a democracy and I like democracy. Uh, and, um, you know, getting out and earning votes, uh, I think is a really important checks and balances, uh, for democracy. And, you know, during campaigns, people make a lot of promises. Um, and I, I tend not to do that. Uh, one thing I, I won't promise you is I won't promise you that you will always agree with me or you'll always agree with my votes even. But one thing I can promise you, and it's the only thing I'll promise you tonight or the rest of this year. And it's the only thing I promised you four years ago. And that is the fact that I will always research the issues harder and deeper and more deliberately than anybody. And I promise you that the decisions that I will try to reach will be decisions that I feel in my career as a lifelong educator and policy, uh, professional. So lifelong educator and policy professional, the, the decisions that keep kids at the center. Truly, my entire career, beginning in 2001 as an English teacher, um, my entire career, uh, has put kids at the center. And, and my career's trajectory, interestingly, has been the direct result of responding to young people's, um, dreams and visions. Um, it led me, uh, to opening up a nonprofit coffee shop in Over the Rhine, when there weren't coffee shops in Over the Rhine. It led me to forming another nonprofit, working with people with felony convictions to get them back into the workforce. It ultimately led me out of the classroom and more into the community as a community organizer in Lower Price Hill. Ultimately, as a director of an agency, working with children experiencing homelessness. And now, um, working, uh, to make policies, as, as Jamaica noted, um, that make life better and pregnancy better for black women and their babies. Um, it's kids and it's kids' needs and desires and dreams and visions that have led me to this place. Um, I take that very seriously. It's also what inspired me to run for the school board the last time. So that is what I will promise you. Um, you know, I've been on the school board now for three and a half years. And when I got elected, um, I, like you, I'm certain, and certainly my wife Katie, uh, did not, uh, envision that these three and a half years would be so exciting. Um, it began with, um, a very public soccer stadium. Uh, then went to a very public tax agreement with the city of Cincinnati. And then of course, COVID-19 last year. What's important to remember is, uh, while those three big items that various times were on the cover of the newspaper and all over the TV, there was a lot of other things that went on. Um, namely, keeping a district moving for 36, 37,000 children so that they can have the best education possible. And, and, and making communities safer, um, for families and making, uh, streets more walkable and all sorts of initiatives that were born out of Cincinnati Public Schools leadership, vision and direction. Um, what I learned in those three and a half years, uh, if I may, uh, I thought a lot about what I would talk about tonight. And, and, and one of the things is, you know, I think it's a time to reflect looking at the next four years. People have asked me, are you gonna run again? What is wrong with you? Well, I, I love kids and I love this city. And I think the best way to impact this city is through the kids and, and working with the kids uh, and creating situations where they can maximize their true potential. What I learned over the past three years is that this job works best when it's, when it, when it, when it's seen through the paradigm of managing change, not managing the public. All too often, um, in my day job as a policy professional who works largely with Columbus on healthcare policy, you see legislators and you see elected people who fall into the trap of managing the public. And that's not why I got into this. I got into this to manage change. And the only way that I can manage change is with the public. I need you, every single one of you, and your friends and your neighbors and your family to help me manage that change. Over the past year, um, with COVID-19, uh, it was not always easy. As I'm sure many of you know, uh, many of you, uh, communicated with directly. Some of you I maybe have never met, um, but it was, it was a difficult year at times. Um, standing firmly on a few principles. Those two principles, uh, that I elected to stand firmly on were one, public health and two, um, uh, learning access. And what I mean by that is making sure that students had access to learning in a consistent manner that would enable them to keep their brains sharp as they were remote. You know, this is why I was the lone no vote and another time a lone yes vote regarding, um, not having kids be back. You know, this is why I was the lone no vote and another time alone yes vote regarding, um, not having kids be back in school. Um, and, and many of you have heard me say numerous times, for me, it was difficult. But the choice was consistent disruption or inconsistent disruption. What I know about education, um, as a educator and former assistant principal, um, that consistency is important. And I say all this to say that, uh, while that was not necessarily easy to always stand strong, I was able to stand strong because of you. And I was able to stand strong because of your support and your family's support. And that has meant the world to not only me, but to my wife Katie and to my son James. Even though he may not know what's going on, I promise you that it means the world to him because it helped keep dad level. So thank you for that. And I'm here to tell you that when I earn reelection, I will need you more than ever as we rebuild this district, as we rebuild trust in not only the Cincinnati Public Schools Board of Education, but in the district as a whole. This year, as we rebuild the district, um, and next year and the year after that, and probably the year after that, and maybe even the year after that, we need to rebuild the district while keeping in mind that we're also rebuilding trust. And I understand that trust has been lost. Um, and, uh, there are, are people who have lost trust in me. And I'm here to tell you that, you know, I want to earn that back. And to those who, uh, who have stood by me this whole time, um, I'm just gonna tell you that we all need to be in this together and help people earn their trust back in the district because it was a traumatic year for a lot of people. We talk a lot about trauma in kids, but this was a traumatic year for everybody. But Cincinnati Public is the best district in the state of Ohio, and Cincinnati Public has everything that it needs to bounce back. And what it needs is you, and what it needs is your families, and what it needs are your kids. You know, I run on a platform of accessibility, accountability, and adaptability. Yeah, it breaks down to the straight A plan, which is clever, but those words mean something to me. And I'm gonna tell you what they mean to me. Accessibility, uh, promotes accountability, which enables adaptability. What do I mean by that? Uh, you, you heard Jamaica and Jackie say that it was accessible. Um, sometimes, you know, uh, I might be, uh, I don't wanna say too accessible, but I joke that I feel like my cellphone number might be written on stalls around the city or, or put up on placards around the city. And I want it that way. I want people to be in touch with me. I didn't get this, uh, job or, or work so hard for this seat so that I could ignore you. I need you. Um, and that accessibility has helped me to, to, um, be accountable. Because if I'm accessible to you, then by very nature of that, I'm held accountable. And as such, I am able to adapt to an ever-changing landscape in education and in the community. And again, no time have we needed adaptability more than during COVID-19. And so accessibility, accountability, adaptability, you know, I was talking with Jayla about, what do you know, do we have to update the message for the reelection campaign? Like, no, why would we? Those three things are the things. Those are the things that make a democracy powerful. An elected person is a representative of you. Accessibility ensures accountability, promotes adaptability. Um, because of you, um, in my first three and a half years on the board, I was able to accomplish a number of things, um, oftentimes with the help of my colleagues. This is a team sport. Uh, one was a good food procurement process. Good food procurement, um, was a really transformative, uh, policy uh, that I helped to, uh, lead through the process on my first year on the board. And what it means is, is that as a district, when we buy our food, we look at five major components of vendors. One is local economies. Are these people local? Two is, is the food nutritious? Is it good for our kids? Does it help them learn? Three, do the vendors value their workforce? Are they shops that pay people living wages and give them benefits? Four, we look at environmental stability. Are the people with whom we are procuring our food kind to the environment, are they engaged in good practices there? And then lastly, related animal welfare. Are they treating the animals well if we're talking about meat? Now, we haven't perfected all of these. That's a big sea change. You know, this public school district has more purchasing power than just about any other government entity in the region. And I'm a firm believer that every time you spend a penny, you vote. And if I have oversight of half a billion dollars with a B, that's a lot of power to make change because that purchasing power says something in a country that's driven by capitalism. And I'm, I'm proud that the district has adopted the good food procurement plan. And I'm proud that on May Day, a couple of years ago, we were awarded, um, uh, a certificate from a number of labor organizations for our forward-thinking policies. Second, um, because directly of the community and a bunch of parents in the community, uh, we were successful. Uh, my colleague Eve Bolton, um, was right there with me on this, and then the rest of the board. We were successful in getting our high school start times pushed back to eight AM or later. Um, eight-thirty was kind of the golden mean. We got to eight. Um, we feel good about that. We know the adolescent brain works better if it wakes up later. That was a big sea change and difficult logistically with busing, but we did it. And I told you four years ago that I would work on that, and we did it. And I'm proud to be able to say that. Three, Gamble Montessori High School is a new building. How great is this? I know some of you are still excited about that. Shortly after I got on the board, we bought Mercy High School, and there was a lot of talk about what would go in Mercy High School. And, um, any Westwood resident who is on this call, uh, will tell you that I'm not making it up when I say I was a adamant supporter of moving Gamble Montessori into that building from the get-go. And then, of course, what came out of it was any, a new Montessori school in the old Gamble property. So you have Gamble Montessori Elementary. So you got a revamped Gamble Montessori in a building that really speaks to the amazing programming and pedagogical things coming out of there. Then you got a new elementary school right down the street. So we have two Montessoris now in Westwood. This, uh, picture over here, this is kinda, yeah, right there, it says, be the person you needed when you were younger. Uh, I just hung that up. It was given to me by the principal of Dater Montessori yesterday. So stream of consciousness. That wasn't part of the script, but I can't help but, uh, see it over there. I didn't know it was gonna be right over my shoulder. That, uh, that worked out well. You're welcome, Nikki. I see you. Um, COVID-19, not something I campaigned on, certainly. But what I did campaign on was accessibility. And I campaigned on consistency. And I told you four years ago, the same thing I'm gonna tell you tonight. While you may not always agree with me, you will always know where I stand. You will always know that I will do what I say I'm going to do, even if you disagree with it. I am going to do what I say I'm going to do, and I'm gonna do it after much thought and deliberation. That consistency and that ability to stand strong on principles, um, I, I, I hope, I hope, uh, did some good throughout this past year. I hope it did. The anti-racism policy, you know, I campaigned on equity. I'm on the equity committee at work. You heard Jamaica, um, say two kind things about me. Thank you, Jamaica. You said very kind things about me. Equity is very important to me. I am a white man working in a black woman's world. Um, I have had to undergo some very intense implicit bias training the past two and a half years. And I'm gonna get personal for a minute. Um, as a forty-three-year-old, almost forty-three-year-old guy, considers himself fairly woke to realize, you know, that I wasn't, that I had a lot to work on because of this training. Has been really instructive for me and, and very good for me. And I, I've been working really hard to try to get better and to try to, you know, accept, you know, just by being me, the privilege, um, that gives me. And it's changed how I've interacted in my professional life, and, and I like to think that it's impacted my elected duties as well. As such, on June tenth of last year, I assigned the development of an anti-racism policy to the administration. It was passed and approved unanimously in December. I'm very proud to say that born out of that policy, there is, for the first time ever, uh, next school year, there will be an Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion in Cincinnati Public School District. And there will be a Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, who will be a senior-level person who will report to the superintendent. Um, I am extremely excited about this. I think it's gonna be transformative for our children. We are also going to adopt an anti-racism curriculum. The days of Black History Month being talked about in February and then never again are done in Cincinnati Public. Now, I realize a lot of schools always talked about it, but this is gonna be across the board, and we're gonna have somebody holding us accountable to it. Moving forward, um, I, I'm going to continue to be a voice of safety for your children and for your families as we adapt to this new reality and the future of public education. I am going to continue the momentum begun by Policy 2256, the anti-racism policy, ensuring that our Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion has teeth and that when we look at things like disparities in discipline and education and disability identification, that we have remediative, um, things in place to make sure that we don't continue down this path. Which leads me to a, a recent topic, um, that's been brought up at every one of our board meetings for the past, seems, year or so, and that is the, um, police in our schools. The Young Activist Coalition, uh, is one group that has done an excellent job bringing this to our attention. Um, it's a group of students in the district, um, but also many adults in the community have also brought it to our attention. Um, the ACLU, um, did a report that found out of the sixty-three percent of our students who are black, ninety-three percent of all of our out-of-school suspensions are from that population, ninety-three percent. Eighty-nine percent of people referred to the police are black. Eighty-five percent of in-school suspensions are black, and seventy-eight percent of all expulsions are black students. This is disturbing data, certainly. Um, I, I don't believe there is a panacea, um, uh, to address this because we're talking about four hundred years of systems created intentionally to ensure that black people are not given the same opportunities as people who look like me. That said, I, I have a limited time on this planet, and, uh, hopefully I don't have a super limited time on this board. I'd like to be here for at least another term or two. Um, and in that time, I would like to, uh, chip away at those systems as much as I can because I can't stand for them. And I can't go to sleep knowing that I've been afforded the opportunity to make change and not do it. As such, I think we need to take a real deep dive into looking at police in our schools. Is it benefiting our children? If so, how? Um, I have data from American Civil Liberties Union, um, that, that is disturbing. And, uh, I'd like to see data, you know, that, that, that is contrary. And i- if I can't, if I don't, um, then, you know, we need to have a different conversation. And so the good news is, I think, people in the police department are ready for this conversation, people at the district, and it's time to have it because it is unacceptable, I wanna be heard very plainly, it is unacceptable to me that over ninety percent of our black students, um, make up our out-of-school suspension. When you're out of school, you can't learn. When you're out of school, you can't make friends. And for many of our students, when you're out of school, you can't eat. And I can't accept that. And so I think we have to have serious conversations about this. And the anti-racism policy, if it's going to be more than window dressing, um, needs to be used to have these conversations because if we have a policy that says we're anti-racist, we need to be anti-racist. Rebuilding trust, I told you, that's something we have to do. Um, you know, transparency is important and community engagement is important. And what I've learned is in being transparent, you promote community engagement. And community engagement further promotes more transparency and round and round it goes. I promise you, I will continue to be transparent. I will continue to look to you for your help and advice. And we need to ensure that parents and teachers and all stakeholders are at the table as decisions are being made, not after the fact. So lastly, um, some tangible things I'd like you to know I've been advocating for in the budget going into next school year. Um, uh, second shift school, uh, I've really been interested in this. I think it would open up a lot of opportunities for our families. You know, our public school system, along with every system, uh, that's built on fragile soil, which is it's about every public system, job and family services, um, childcare, Head Start, public schools, et cetera. Um, they got rocked by COVID. You know, I'm not one to look for the silver lining, but I think if there is one here, it is that there's an opportunity to rebuild all of these systems in a new way. And, um, I think a second shift school is a real tangible way to do that. Um, and give, you know, some power to our families to choose what works best for them. Investing in streaming and technology. Um, if we had done that ten years ago, twenty years ago, uh, perhaps this experience would not have been quite as traumatic this past year. Now's the time to do it. Hopefully, we won't have to experience this again. Um, this being at home, this remote learning, this back and forth. But if we do, um, let's invest. Um, our anti-racist curriculum, uh, I, I believe that's on everybody's budget priorities. Um, the, the DNI, uh, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion person, um, their salary and what they need to do their job, which is important. Not just hiring the person, but ensuring that they have a staff and what they need to do their job. That's key. More guidance counselors. I'm a huge fan of guidance counselors and social workers. I think it's important. Restorative practice and guidance counselors and, and social workers are trained to work with students. We need help, and I think we need to invest even more there. And then lastly, uh, as noted, restorative practice um, and, and any initiative that can help us to do that. Um, in closing, you know, um, we we've talked a lot about, you know, what has happened and what is gonna happen going forward. And I just wanna close sort of where I began, which is, say, I need you to do all of these things. I cannot do them alone, uh, and we have to do them together. This is a we position. Democracy is a two-way street. Do my best to keep, uh, my lane open so I can keep moving and, uh, and, and keep obstructions out of yours. You can tell it was an English teacher. I like analogies, maybe too much. We have to do this together. I, I, I need you to sign up to volunteer on our website, um, at mickmorosky.com backslash get-dash-involved. Um, and, and please donate. You know, we're gonna fund this campaign, uh, with, with real people's dollars um, so that we can do work on behalf of real people. Um, you know, you all make up this district, and I am doing this for you and for your children and for your families. And to do that, uh, the reality is that we need dollars to do that. It's mickmorosky.com backslash donate. Every penny counts. And, uh, you know, with that, I just wanna, uh, say one more time, thank you so much to, to the host committee for this event. Thank you so much to Jamaica. Thank you so much to Jackie and to Karen. And, uh, yeah, give me another shot. I won't let you down. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Mike, is it okay if we get some questions? So first one, what's your number one priority for the upcoming school year?
My number one priority, um, for the upcoming school year is ensuring that when we start, we start, um, uh, uh, from a place where every family has the option that they need for their child to learn. Um, I don't think it is a, would be a shocking thing for me to say that we didn't always get that right this past year. And I don't think any of my colleagues would disagree with that either. Um, and there are a million reasons for that. Um, some are good, most aren't, but we didn't always get it right. And so starting, you know, at the beginning of the school year, ensuring that if you want your child at home, concurrent learning, streaming, or in the building, we can do it. One last thing on that. If concurrent learning, which is just for people who don't use these words every day like I do, that's, you know, the teachers in the classroom teaching those kids, but then also there's a camera, and they're teaching people at home concurrently. That's hard on teachers, uh, real hard. And so if we do that, we also need to ensure that we are investing dollars, whether it's Title II dollars from the federal government or, or Biden bucks from CARES Act or whatever it is, into, uh, some kind of training for teachers to do that effectively.
Great answer. Um, I'd like to hear more about Mike's priorities, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. I'm also interested in how CPS will reengage parents and community members as volunteers and supporters.
That's great. So, yeah, my, my top-line priorities, um, you know, really are in line with that question, I think. Um, and, and beginning with that rebuilding the trust. And again, to rebuild that trust, the only way that's gonna happen is with more transparency and again, with, um, uh, bringing parents in at the beginning of the process. So let me give you a tangible sort of thing. There's a lot of parents watching this right now. Um, and you all are very familiar with the CPS robocall. And you're very familiar with the CPS survey. Um, oftentimes, and not always, and, and this is not meant to be disparaging, um, toward anybody at all because this is something I, I have to own. Um, that's part of this job, is owning it. Even, even, even the, or especially the bad stuff. Um, oftentimes, surveys will come out after a number of decisions have been made. Again, I don't think this is a secret. Um, so you'll get two options, but there was a third and fourth maybe that you would have liked to have seen, but that's too bad. And, you know, I think it's incumbent upon us, you know, we contract with a number of great groups that know how to garner input from the community. And I think, you know, it sounds, uh, I hate to say simple because nothing is simple in a huge, uh, system like CPS, but as simple as beginning with parents at the table and starting but as simple as beginning with parents at the table and starting with that transparency, which again, I think promotes that community engagement. So that's number one, rebuilding trust. Number two is really actualizing this next year Board Policy 2256, the anti racism policy. That is really important to me that we actualize that policy, not to, and you know, now there's a temptation to say, we did it, check, we're done. A lot of policy does that. Jamaica knows, she serves on my policy committee in my day job and a lot of policies do that. We're not doing that. So some folks are the second best is, well, we hired someone to oversee it. Check, we're done. That's not good enough either. Like I said, we need to make sure that this person has a staff and has what they need to do their job. And then also has the support from us, us being the board going forward. And then lastly is the budget management. You know, we are going to see an influx of capital, of dollars, of real dollars that we've never seen, ever. And, you know, it's earmarked for learning recovery and safety protocols and a few other things. But there's a real opportunity, as noted, like with that second shift school. There's a real opportunity to rebuild this district through an equity lens for every family. My wife just came, my cat, he was, he was coughing up a hairball that apparently, I'm sure you all heard. So, sorry.
Nice question, but cute cat though. Can you help YAC have a voice at the Board of Education table? Many are wondering if the Board of Education doesn't want their data revealed to the public.
So the YAC is the Young Activist Coalition I referenced earlier. And the answer to Ms. Miller, thank you, Ms. Miller for the question and for everything you do every day for our kids at Roslon. The answer is yes. And, you know, I, I think on Monday, you know, I, I've been inquiring a lot about our SRO contract, the School Resource Officer Contract, or the MOU rather, it's an MOU, not a contract. And, and what is engaged in there, and you know, a lot of the data the Young Activist Coalition has shown, has shown me is very compelling. In fact, I gave a kudos to them on Monday that their, their data and their activism has changed my opinion. I never had a strong opinion one way or the other, to be perfectly honest, about the School Resource Officer Program. I really didn't. But I think I was more inclined to think that it was great, for whatever reason. Maybe because I'm a white male, to be blunt. I, and that's, you know, again, regardless of how woke I might think I am, you know, I was raised in that sort of white America. Anyway, I digress. Maybe not though, maybe I don't. I think that might be relevant. My point of that is, you know, looking at all of the data, the data seems to say that it's not, it's not great. Now, I'm not saying it can't be, maybe it can be better. And so I think Holly, my point of that is all to say is that I think their voice has reached the table. They have certainly gotten the attention of all the board members. And as far as not winding their data out, I mean, their data is out, you know? The Local 12 did a story on it and the statistics I read off, I'm sure some of you saw. And so again, it would be easy to say, well, everybody has that problem. But the fact is, we're disproportionately disciplining black kids five times more. And Cleveland and Columbus, while it's not all apples to apples, it's similar, right? It's more so than us to Mason. Cleveland and Columbus are, you know, every, every school district is disciplining black kids more because of the racist systems in our racist country. Cleveland and Columbus are disciplining their kids two and a half times. We're disciplining them five times. That's a big difference. And, and, you know, I, I just think we need to look at that. So thanks for the question.
And Kathy Wilson Sackett would like to know second shift school days in and out. Not sure what that means. And I didn't know what that means either.
Yeah, sorry. I'm so sorry. So a second shift school is basically it's a night school. So it's a, if, if, say if a mom or dad, or mom and dad, or dad and dad, or mom and mom, or whoever, grandpa, whoever the kid is living with, has like a third shift job, a second shift job. You know, regular schooling doesn't work great. It's not, it's, it's not working as well. And so essentially the child will be in school while, while the guardian is working. And so it would be a school that would operate on the same kind of hours as a second shift job. So it'd be hard to have a third shift job overnight because we don't want to keep kids up over, right? All night. A second shift school would help, even with the third shift a little bit, but would certainly help with that second shift worker. And as you may be aware, you know, we have a lot of families, you know, who don't have this traditional sort of nine to five, wake up, eat breakfast, drive your kid to work. That, that's not, that's not reality. And so this would help families and then ostensibly a kids, right? Because then you have kids, you know, maybe that are able to spend more time with, you know, the guardian, whoever they're living with.
Definitely. Thank you so much for that answer.
No, no problem.
I think that might be all of our questions.
Well, I have a couple.
Oh, okay.
I have a couple.
I'm here for it.
Yeah, so I'm going to ask, no, I'm just kidding. I have questions that were sent ahead of time. That were sent ahead of time and I'm just gonna, it'll be quick. There, there's like three big ones. And one is from my friends Mary Buehler and Eric Jenkins. Hello, Mary and Eric. And they asked a question about how the primary focus of our strategic plan is on growth. And even all of the other measures like student centered decision making, optimizing systems, et cetera, even those are all sort of based on growth. And their question was, classrooms are already overcrowded, student teacher ratios don't serve the students. It's true. I question a plan that focuses on finances without taking into account the wellbeing of students. It's a great question. That's, that's a hard question. And so Mary and Eric, what I would say, and for anyone else who might be wondering that. So when we talk about the growth, you know, a lot of what we are looking at is growing the district and the offerings as a whole, so that it, again, through that equity lens, so that the classrooms aren't as crowded. We have more buildings, we have more space. We're looking at expanding a number of our schools. So last year, many people know, we were looking at building out at some of our most overcrowded schools. And then COVID happened and it stopped. Good news is we're resuming that. We're going to start capital improvements like Pleasant Ridge Montessori, which is busting at the seams. Walnut Hills, which has been for who knows how long. We're going to start looking over on the west side of town. There's a lot of schools there. People familiar with Reese Price will, will know that that, that place is really packed. And so the growth isn't necessarily just the numbers of kids. I think that's part of it, yes. But also just growing our footprint in general. So we have A, more offerings of what families want, whether it's career tech, Montessori, et cetera. I don't think it's any secret CPS is a unicorn when it, Jamaica went to SCPA, she'll tell you. We have, public school districts are not supposed to have schools like, like that. We have so many different kinds of schools. And so we want to continue that trajectory. Another question was from Sarah Davis about how do we feel we can address the issue of equity among buildings? Meaning some facilities are beautiful, pristine, and some look like they might be falling apart. HVAC systems that haven't been updated in forever. And so Sarah, not to not answer your question uniquely, but I would just point to the question I just, you know, responded to. It's a similar kind of thing. We're, we need to reinvent current buildings. We need to look at new buildings and we need to plan for, for that future. And then lastly, from my friend Gladys Pope, hello Gladys. What is the best? Gladys, I love you. This is a woman of few words and just cut right to it.
I like it.
Best strategy to combat disparities in discipline in CPS? The best strategy to combat disparities in discipline in CPS is to stop pretending that they don't exist. And when we stop pretending that they don't exist, we then have to look in the mirror and admit that we discipline black students more than white students. And again, 63% of our students are black. Yes, that's more than half. But the, the ratios, they don't pan out. They don't pan out. And, and that's a problem. And so I'm going to put it, I'm going to put it to you how I put it to my teachers when I was an assistant principal. Unless we are willing to say that we think our black students, particularly our black young men, are somehow more deficient mentally, behaviorally and emotionally than our white students. If we're not willing to say that, I'm sure as hell not. Then we have to change our systems because systems are designed to self perpetuate. They will not change of their own accord. They must be disrupted. And the way we disrupt them is by taking definitive action from which we don't back down. We have a starting point with our new anti racism policy. We have a starting point with our new office and our new director. But now we need to hold ourselves accountable. And the Board of Education, I, I'm happy to say, I, I think is ready to hold themselves accountable. I'll be, I'll, I'll take the pledge now and say, I'm ready to hold myself accountable because I am not going to bed anymore at night knowing that 93% of my students are being disproportionately impacted. 93% of our in school suspensions being black students, I'm not okay with that. I'm not okay with more black students being arrested in our schools than white students. And so I do think though, that that very hard truth of admitting that to ourselves and not hiding from it anymore is where we have to start. So thanks for the question, Gladys.
Thank you so much for the, those questions. Those are great answers. It answers that I could understand. So they had to be great answers. Sometimes I don't understand all the lingo, but I was with it this time. So again, you all, if you guys want to help out, want to volunteer, at Mike Morosky dot com. That's where you can volunteer. That's where you can donate. Oh, is that a bumper sticker?
Oh yeah, we got bumper stickers.
Bumper stickers?
Look, if you want bumper stickers, we got these stickers. You need to hit up the
All the, all the stickers.
Team Morosky at Gmail, Team Morosky at Gmail. Hit up to get involved. We're going to have T shirts soon. Mike Morosky dot com.
Definitely. I love to hear it. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here today, even through our technical difficulties. We are here for you, no matter what.
We did it.
Thank you guys so much. We did it. Here goes.
All right. Thanks y'all. Let's do this.
Have a great one. Let's do this.